...about moving it to the right field. Our feeling was that the, on the left field line, it's going to be on the north side of that bank of trees and pretty much always in the shade. We felt that it would be less visible because of that. It'd be painted a dark green. Additionally, if it were put over on the right field line, it's likely that you couldn't read it in the afternoon because of the sun angle and sun shining on it. And the, the left field line is really a perfect location for it. I think that, oh, seating. So, and that's already been talked about quite a bit. And as Lisa said, it is by code sized or calculated at 200, but that's based on about that much width per body. And we feel that it's physically not that comfortable and realistic. You know, people that are coming are mostly parents and kids with bags of snacks and stuff, and it really more comfortably is going to seat 100. And we've got some more boards down here. Since we were here last time, we've edited our 3D model. Lisa encouraged us to add some people to help add some scale to it, which we've done. If anybody has any questions about that or would like to see any of these other boards, I'm happy to pass them around or hold them up or swap them out. Otherwise, I'll pass it over to Mark Slichter. Thank you.
I have a question.
Can we wait for all questions until the end? I'm trying to take you through it.
The landscape architects get to do all the fun stuff, the plants and stuff like that. Everybody else wants to do it, but we just get to do it. Appreciate your time this evening. I'm Mark Slichter with Calendar Associates, and I've been working with this group for a little while now. I'd like to take just a couple minutes to walk you through what we're showing here. Elaboration is always good. I know these are in your packets, but I think it is worth a few minutes here, and I don't want to take too much time because I imagine we'll be able to get to most of our answers through Q and A. So I'm going to start out with the site plan or the landscape concept plan and kind of walk you through that. Basically, what we're trying to do with the plan is to, is to fit the improvements into the site. So that would be the seating area, to address aesthetic considerations, and then to address the program elements that we have here. So that would be what the Little League is trying to achieve. And so if I kind of structure what I say along those lines, it should flow a little bit better. With respect to fitting it to the site, we're showing the seating area. And then you see surrounding that seating area, a lighter area. That's an indication of a pavement, something along what we're anticipating is a colored concrete pavement. So it's a, it's a step up from a, from a standard sidewalk. It's not, and it's certainly a lot nicer than asphalt. So that allows for circulation of people around that area. Those areas are always very popular during game times. And then we're, then we're restoring the connections to the existing paths. So there's the path that goes out to the street, we tie back into that. And then the path that goes to the parking lot would get restored. We're anticipating that that will be rebuilt in its entirety because that would likely be how this project would be built. That's how the contractor would access the site. We're showing an eight-foot path there. I know there's some consideration or some concerns with respect to the path width. The proposal of eight feet is to allow for a smaller vehicle like a Cushman or something like that to get out to this facility with the restrooms, with regular cleaning, with trash disposal. It's likely that something like a Cushman would be the kind of vehicle that would be regularly transiting out there. When I was out there yesterday with Kevin, the man in charge of maintenance that I saw that day had a small, total motorized cart. So we're basically just making a provision for something like that. So that's the path. One of the things that doesn't leap out at you from a, from a plan view or three-dimensional aspects, and I want to briefly touch on that, something that you guys are all probably aware of is that the field is just a little bit higher than the tennis courts. Basically, it's two feet since the, since the topographic survey has been performed and we're able to figure that out exactly. We've got, we've got a couple of feet of grade change. So one of the things that we're doing here is addressing that grade change in the plan. When the seating goes in and the walkway around it goes in, that basically wants to hold about level with the field. So when you do that, what you've done is you've taken away that gradual slope down of the court. So somehow, we still need to get down to the court elevation. So what we've done is we've incorporated some narrow planters, which is allowed, which allows to do that. So that's, that's kind of a more subtle aspect of this thing, and I wanted to make sure I got that out there. We did have a discussion with the, I'm blinking on the name now, but the professional, the tennis pro that teaches here, and did quiz them on whether or not they've got any issues with foul balls. And the report was that, yeah, that is occasionally a nuisance. I think it was actually stated stronger than that, but I'll leave it at that. And so that was one of the reasons why, you know, we really thought that the hooded backstop would be a big improvement. The one that's out there now is vertical, so it doesn't catch nearly as much as one that's going to come back over the plate. So that, that's an element of the plan. We're, we're sensitive to the fact that people are going to be using these courts and they're, and they're trying to play their best game the same time that a Little League game is going on. So we've added some planting to provide some buffer and some separation. So I'm going to show you that. That's all along that stretch. I'd mentioned earlier that one of the things that we're always looking at is fit and aesthetic considerations, and those, those goals are kind of combined in some of the planting that we're proposing here. So we've got planters on either end of the building, and you see that we have small ornamental trees that are proposed in those locations. And, and the reason for that is to break up the massing, a little bit of the structure. It's not very big for starters, but to break it up a little bit and just add that aesthetic element. So we have a, a total of eight trees that are proposed. Those trees largely come from the Holbrook Palmer Park Tree Master Tree List. Five are proposed to come out. There's a small oak, about a one or two inch. There's a eleven-inch oak out there, Quercus lobata. And there's three pistachio trees, and I got together with Kevin yesterday to look at those and give some serious thought to what would be involved in relocating them. And so I wanted to share that with you guys. And if I say anything that's wrong, correct me. In essence, it came down to this. Two of the pistachio are good candidates for relocating. One of them is a little misshapen as a result of the wind over the years and is maybe a better candidate for replacement with a new tree. A small oak tree could probably be fairly easily relocated, and we even found a spot that would be good for that. The larger oak tree is a, is a big question mark right now. It could be relocated, but its, its growth is such that, or its, its structure is such that it has the potential to be a slightly weak wooded tree. It has a narrow crotch, and narrow crotches are prone to breakage. So what we need to do there is, is pull in an arborist to basically do an assessment before we spend the kind of money that it would take to move that around. That's what we propose. So that, that was the summary of our, of our meeting out there. Then moving on lastly to program elements, you, most of it's pretty much been put out there now. When I say program elements, I'm talking about the things that are accommodations for the Little League. So you've heard about the foul poles, you've heard about the, the backstop, the foul line fencing, the outfield fencing. I can't add anything to that because it's all, I'm not going to waste your time. The one thing I would like to return to though is the scoreboard location. There, I, I've had the misfortune of working on a project where the scoreboard was put in the wrong spot and was not readable, and I'm, and I'm very certain that that's what we'll be looking at if we try to put the scoreboard down the right field fence here. So I did want to just emphasize that point. Let it fall halfway through. This just shows some of the elements. The backstop, 20 feet tall with a hood, foul line fencing, the scoreboard, three by eight up to 10 feet in height. The other thing, I guess one of the things we haven't touched on is sound ending material. Their backstop pads, yeah, they do den the sound, but that, that isn't necessarily their primary function. So I guess it's a win-win. So we do, we are showing those, and then the foul poles here. I will, we would at that respond to questions.
We'll have questions at the end of...
You're set? We're ready.
He's the last man.
He's the last one.
Last man standing.
All right. Commissioner?
I know you got it.
Do you have a question, Eric?
I've got a bunch, but...
All right. Well, sorry, you jump in first so we get the first crack. All right. Good.
Oh, you want me to go? I don't want you to go. Phil started. I thought he was going to start.
The lineup is imposing.
Phil, do you want to start?
The first question I was going to ask was, in the first presentation, Carl, I think, mentioned vertically transparent. That's a brand-new term, and when you look at some of the cross-sections or the elevations of the proposed seating element, that's not transparent. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
How do you...
Well, I'm saying in, in general, the, we're not, we're not proposing to build any kind of solid walls or there's no walls or planes that make the dugout solid. I did mention when I say that, that that, that's, you know, there is a wall back at the rear of the covered seating, but it's also, you know, it's open on the sides, and of course, the whole front is open.
But the seating area is solid. You can't see through there and see what's behind you. You can't see the tennis courts.
No. You can't, you can't see through the seats.
So it's not transparent?
Well, it depends where you're standing. You know, if you're standing over here on the side, you can see through, you know, three, three of the four sides are open, and, and the dugouts are completely open.
And will you tell me some more about the outfield fence itself? Whoever's planned that house to be removed and handled?
So the outfield fence is a nylon mesh technology using PVC pipes and subgrade PVC sockets. So you take, you basically take a tool, you dig in like you would do with a golf cup. Okay? So the cup and a green. And you cut it out, you cut out just a small hole, or you could pound them directly in. It's like a large white spike. You can do one or the other. That goes in subgrade, so other sports could play right over it. And they use this technology in Hillsborough. That's where I first found it. The PVC pipes or, you know, that you would use for your sprinkler system go through a sleeve in the fence. They're yellow sleeves, banded with black nylon mesh in between each run. And then there's a yellow strip across the top. Each one has a cap. So they're basically, you just set it in, boom, go 10 feet, go to the next one. And when you remove it, you lay it all out, and then you just roll it up into sections. And then a couple of people carry it. It takes about anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half to set up or remove, depending on how many people are there. Fortunately, we have a good amount of volunteers.
And the proposal by Little League is to leave that a false season off?
Well, we would leave it up with the exception of maintenance, mowing, weeding, et cetera. Take it down for special events at the request of the town. Because it goes up and down, and the more you take it up and down, the more likely it is to break. They do cost about $3,000, depending on the fence that you have. So we'd like to, you know, we definitely want to leave it up there, and it makes it much easier for games, practices, keeping dogs off the fields, keeping kids off the fields. Our game last night, Paul, there were girls running out onto the field, and dogs run out there quite a bit. Our main concern actually with leaving it up is that it becomes a de facto dog park, as we've seen with Burgess Park and other parks. So we will be sensitive to that as well, but it is definitely removable. And unlike, I'm sorry, this one here says relocatable outfield fence. It is not chain link. It is a nylon mesh. You could run into it, and it collapses, and it's completely safe. It's wonderful technology.
But it doesn't have a right little cap?
It does. It has just a strip, a streamer across it, and it's on the inside.
The other question is on the seating. I think we asked this before. I'll put it in a certain minute. My view recently in looking across the field of some of the games is that the attendance is somewhere between 20 and 30.
20 and 30 that you can generally see if you're driving along Watkins, as I did three times yesterday and going in. You can really see the right field side. You can't see the left field side as much. Most games will have probably 30 to 50 people. Bigger games with weekend games or Thursday night games will have more people. There's team dinners afterwards. Last night, we probably had, I'd say, 80 total people, kids, families, et cetera. So about 80 people, including ballplayers.
That doesn't match what I've seen, but I thank you for your comment anyway.
Yep.
One question though, in regard to the outfield fence. Isn't that going to be removable at the end of the season?
Oh, absolutely, and it will definitely come down.
Yeah. So basically, what you're talking about is a four-month period of leaving it up.
Correct. With the exception of maintenance, which we do weekly.
Yes, maintenance obviously for long, whatever. But basically, it's there for four months.
Yeah.
And for the eight months, it's gone.
Exactly. And we may actually alter that if we see that other people, if it gets damaged once, you know, one time, okay, learn from it. Second, you're foolish if you leave it up. We may alter that, and it may become a thing that we have to do each time. We hope not, but if that's the case, then we'll have to adjust the plan because, again, they are expensive, and we don't want to continually replace.
Any other questions?
I'll ask more again later. I'll come back.
Well, this is your chance to ask questions.
My question?
He's just saying he wants to get his chance to...
All right. Eric?
Okay. I wanted to chat on this issue about the meters on the, on the left field line. It's right on the, it's right on the...
They're real close to where the fence would be. It's our recommendation that we should probably move them, but we, I don't believe if we run the fence straight out that they will be in the field of play. They should be just on the foul side, but we'll have to determine that.
It didn't look like it when I walked in. I mean, the stripe was right at it.
Yeah, it gets, it gets real close, exactly. So we're thinking about moving those out a couple of feet.
Well, there's two elements to it. One is the safety factor. The two is the reading factor.
Of course.
Yeah, so it seemed to me like it was too close. It would be too close.
All I was going to offer is that those irrigation valves are relatively easy to relocate.
It just wasn't highlighted in the plan. It seemed like an obvious miss.
Yeah.
Okay. The next thing was, what are the foul poles for?
The foul pole?
Yeah.
To indicate if a, a ball is a homerun or not. So you can look at it, and you can, the umpires can look down the line and say, okay, went to the left of the foul pole on left field. That's a foul ball, right? It's a fair ball.
I asked that question because at this, so I played a lot of baseball, and I've been coached at the baseball. And for a long time, we didn't have foul poles. So I'm wondering, the, with the plan, for me, has to fit two criteria. One has to be a, and since I voted for it, I, I'll speak from the, from where I voted. All right? I voted for something that would be an improvement for kids to play baseball and not change the character of the park. All right? What the proposal is, it now has been presented, doesn't fulfill the second criteria. So here's, here's what I'm looking at. When I asked a question about the foul pole, for the percent of times the foul pole is a factor in a game of this caliber, does it need to be there? And I would, I would contend it does not. And so maybe, maybe 15 years of playing Little League ball and things like that and coaching it, somehow, we always managed to decide if the ball was, was so important that it was a foul or a homerun. So in, in this particular place, in this park, I would, I would at least have you consider whether that's a requirement. The next, the next question I had is about the choice of the bench. Did you look at composite material that would be brown or anything other than aluminum? Because that, there's nothing in the park that is all aluminum that I've seen. So this whole park is this natural thing, and to have 7,000 cans of aluminum at the end of it didn't seem appropriate. So what, what was the choice on the, on the material limit in the bleacher?
The, the general consensus is it's a standard material that's easily available. There are composite materials, as you mentioned, or recycled reclaimed materials that are made from plastic bottles. The same thing can be said with aluminum. Aluminum, however, it can be reclaimed. Aluminum is generally a little on the lesser expensive side, also does not hold the heat like composite materials well because of the resins. So my opinion is aluminum is the way to go, and being that as you drive down Watkins and as you're driving towards middle field, if you look in, your, your eyes are naturally drawn to the sunny side on the right field side. I don't think you're going to necessarily see that from the street.
No, I'm worried about the street. I'm worried about in the park.
Yeah.
So, so for what it's worth, it would seem to me that we want to have something in, in that, consistent with the nature of the park wherever we can. So anytime there's a tall fence that, if you go to that area now, it looks like a meadow with a baseball park in it. And the proposed plan makes it look like a park with a baseball park next to it. All right? So what I'm trying to come up with is a, is a method for preserving both. And I like the, I like the teardown fence. That's a good idea. I, I'm, I'm wondering why that same technology couldn't be used for the foul, for the foul fences, because anytime there's not a baseball game there, it's going to look like it's a baseball game place rather than a meadow in the, in the middle of a community that had an ice park. All right? So anything that you could do that would be in line with the nature of the current character of the park and improve kids' ability to play baseball, I think, is to the benefit of everyone. And there's a couple other points that I, that I was looking at was from the foul pole was one of them. The other one was, what's the height of the back, of the proposed backstop compared to the current backstop?
The overhang is 20 feet. The actual height of the backstop on the backside will be just about the same.
Okay.
I don't know. I think it's probably 14 feet or so.
Okay. All right. That, that, that wasn't clear to me. And the, the color that you chose for the facility, does it, does it, I couldn't, from pictures I saw, it didn't look like it blended in as well to the current structures.
We, we have looked at the carriage house. We've looked at the other buildings in the park and tried to pick a hue that would match. We're actually, we're open to discussion on that.
Okay.
Obviously, there are thoughts and considerations with fading or potential vandalism, as with any structure in the park. So we thought maybe going with a darker shade would actually be a better choice for painting over and masking, so it blends better.
All right.
So the, the color is still to be reviewed.
The other thing on the scoreboard. So I don't like either location of the scoreboard from the standpoint of, again, going back to this notion of maintaining the, the character of the park, because the scoreboard sitting up there, right now, there's two little benches out there by an oak tree looking at a meadow. All right? And that's just about the spot where the scoreboard would be. All right? So did you look at the option of putting a scoreboard in the bleacher area, like on the back wall? Back, back in the day, when there wasn't a, a power cord to the outside of the, of the, of the field, we used to have the scoreboard back in the back of the bleacher area. Did you look at that?
We, we have not looked at that option.
Okay. So my recommendation would be, again, to minimize the impact to this current site, and it's going to be a beautiful thing if we can do that, because kids need a play, place to play, and this is a great idea. But, but doing it at the expense of the character of this park is not the right approach. All right? So I, there's a, if you, if you're designers, then the world, their claim, and I should get an autograph before I leave, I think, would come together with the idea that we have to maintain the character and provide the use. Then I think we will end up with something that hasn't been possible apparently up until now, which is to get something that would be good for the park and good for the community. And right now, we're trading, it's, it's overweighted towards good for the, good for the baseball, and it's not balanced well enough in my opinion. All right? So this is where the planning part comes in, and this is where the community part comes in. Nine years on a school board, six years on the Ravens Education Foundation. I've got a lot of history with kids, all right? And I have a lot of history with, with doing good planning. And if we just tweak it a little bit, we can do both.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, our purpose here in the questioning is to clarify, you know, what the proposal is and what is involved. I think since we are limited to recommendations to the council, the first thing after everyone understands exactly what the proposal is, what items would they like to see placed as a recommendation? And we could go down, for instance, on the backstop, and, and then what I would do, we'd make a list first of various items members of the commission are interested in, and then individually discuss each, each item so that we can come up with a list of recommendations. Is that feasible to the commission?
You're the chairman. Sounds fine.
I said it.
Pardon?
I said it.
We're still asking questions.
Right now, we're asking questions because we're trying to understand fully the proposal so that before we make a recommendation, you have to understand what's, what's there already.
But the applicant, but I'm also relying on the fact that the applicant can propose modifications going forward that would make a lot of things easier.
Well, for instance, on your, your backstop proposal, as I would say, that would be one subject that we would discuss ourselves, that we, during the discussion on backstops, any member would be free to ask the applicant's representatives what can be done or what, to clarify that particular issue, you know, of backstop. So what I propose at this time, we understand exactly what Little League is proposing, and then close the hearing, and then among ourselves, list the items of work or subjects that are of interest to us that we will discuss individually. During that individual discussion of items, we'll carry on in a more informal basis where obviously the applicant can be asked questions and respond to questions that might come up, for instance, a lot of the backstops. So in regard to the proposal itself, does any member of the commission have any comments?
Well, I still have questions.
Yes. I'll call on you then.
Most of my questions have already been answered, but there are two that I'd like to, like to talk about. One is that corner of the park is pre-isolated, and putting a, a big wall there is going to really, you know, cover that back corner. And so one question that I have is, have you guys talked to the police about, do they have any concerns with the fact that you're basically building a screen for everything that's going on, going on back there? I mean, obviously, I'm not an expert in safety or anything, but I feel more comfortable if the police have taken a look at it, just to say, because, for example, there's a gate back there that goes into, into... back there that goes into, into Felton Gables and as I discussed with the town attorney on numerous occasions, my kids use it all the time, but not with an adult. Like never let them in that corner by themselves. And so one thing I encourage you to do is to talk to the police and see if they have any recommendations about, if they have, they have concerns about that. It also, with the way that the, this, that the spectator seating is built sort of back from the existing field, it's even going to make that, that area behind, between it and the, and the tennis court, pretty, pretty tight. So there's not a lot of room for, for circulation back there. So my one question was about the police and to sort of ask about safety. And the other thing that I'd like to get a little bit more clarification on is what exactly is going to be done to the field? Because my view is that's the most important part of this whole project. Making spectators happy is fine, but even if they're unhappy, if the field is really good, that's, that's the primary concern. And when we were talking last time, you know, people have said, oh, that the field is unsafe, that, you know, this, that and the other thing. And then when I look at this proposal, it's like, oh, and we'll make spot repairs for the field. It makes it sound like there's not going to be very much done with the field. And I know that there's a, there's a hill issue in right field and so I don't know what the answer is, I just want to have a little bit more explanation on what's being proposed to be done to the field.
I'll let Mark speak more to those issues and hopefully we'll address all your questions.
I'll speak to the field one, we can come back to some others. The, the proposal is to do repairs throughout the field as opposed to taking the field up and starting from scratch. It's, it's in, in pretty good shape. What, what I need to do is walk it with the folks with the Little League and identify specific areas where we've got irregularities and, and get after those. So that's, that's the idea, is that when it's done, you've got really pretty good planarity out there by getting after those spot areas. But in general, I wouldn't throw out the baby with the bathwater, but I would, I wouldn't propose that the entire field would be torn up because it's, it's really, it's got areas that need work, but the whole thing doesn't need to go. I think some of the things that are problematic out there are what had been mentioned earlier, those, those boxes that are down the left field line, that's the kind of thing that we can get after, which could make a, you know, significant improvement in the basic safety of the field.
So in right field, is, are you guys taking up, making it level in the whole field or it's, it's not? Because I mean, my kid plays out there four times a week and I've never seen him really get into trouble out there, so I'm a little bit confused that the last time it was, it was very unsafe, you've got to clean it up and now it's like, oh, spot repairs. So I'm just trying to figure out.
It, it's unsafe in the sense that the outfield itself is primarily the area of concern. About two, when was it, two seasons ago, we spent over $20,000 resurfacing and basically scraping the entire infield and redoing that and rebuilding the infield with countless amounts of clay and what's called MVP turfis, mixing that all together to make it a consistent playing surface. What we haven't been able to address is the outfield and that's where we would focus our concerns. In the right, in the right field area that you mentioned, it does have the slope. We don't necessarily want to fill that in because then it will mean further fill out further unless you have a drop and that's not conducive once the fence is up.
No, that's what I'm asking you, because it's really, are you going to cut it or are you going to just?
No, because we don't want that drop. That wouldn't behoove anyone and to your point Eric, it wouldn't behoove the other parkgoers that are in the park. So we're being incredibly sensitive to that. What we want to do is go through and I coach soccer out there as well, I coach baseball out there. I have twisted my ankles numerous times in that field. It is a death trap. There's potholes, it's just ridiculous, the irrigation is bad. So that's where we want to address it. And that will also benefit soccer and lacrosse. I've spoken with Mike Milano, the president of AYSO on numerous occasions, offered money to, if we wanted to expand the field out, I said, you guys can take that up with the town, we're not going to redo the whole thing. They have plenty of money if they want to address that. There are issues with a lot of holes out there and that's what we want to attack. The infield, that, that's much easier to address. And then the apron of the infield, as you noticed last night, a couple balls hit that infield and hit the, the apron going into outfield and pop straight up. We need to address that by cutting the turf and removing some of the fill and dropping it back down and letting it reset. So those are the improvements we're talking about making.
I would recommend the right field, the right fielders are a foot taller than the other players.
Exactly, maybe two feet.
Though you mentioned the holes, are these due to moles or are they actual holes?
You know, if I knew that, I probably would be working somewhere else, like the carnival. When I was walking around, it, it looked like a combination of things. It didn't look like any gopher or anything like that, but it looked like just, there was a dig spot and one spot and then there was a, there was a low, low spot. It's just random. It doesn't drain well, it, the irrigation doesn't work well. You'll get muddy spots, particularly in soccer. My kids, every single year we have a practice at least once or twice a week at Holbrook Palmer and there are mud spots, there are low spots, it's just, it's pretty bad.
But spot repair gives the connotation that some parts of the field are not going to be addressed or considered. I mean, in other words, I would think if you're going to spend all this money, that you would make an entire field, maybe doing more work in the outfield, but make it all playable.
Absolutely. And as I mentioned, the infield takes far less work because we redid that, we've already done that.
I think spot repair gives a bad impression as to what your response is.
Trust me, we want to make it as nice and as safe and as smooth as possible. So, but we just don't know the full extent yet until we get a full survey and Mark gets a chance to walk it and we tell him, here's where we have the issues, here's where the issues are, especially closer to the oak tree in the fall or during the rainy season, that becomes a mud pit. So those are the things that we want to, want to address and it will help all parkgoers.
Okay, any further questions?
I have some questions. Okay, when we're talking about the field, it seems that, that there, isn't there supposed to be some tennis court resurfacing?
Yes, in our proposal we have offered.
You know, if you, if you're concerned about how much money you're spending on this stuff, wouldn't it be better to, for the children if we did the whole field instead of resurfacing tennis courts?
In all due respect, with all due respect, that wasn't my call. One of our contributors said, I want to do this too. And we said...